City Council Public Means to Come to Order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Palibidi?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Proposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised, such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open?
To open public hearings?
Motion to open public hearings for numbers one through seven?
Second.
Yeah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number one, we have James Curran, 656 Harvard Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. 656 Harvard Street, curb cut on Eldred Street, existing opening is 12 feet, curbing to be removed is 14 feet, there is no curb to be added, combined proposed, combined opening after, proposed after alteration is 26 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Please come down, state your name, and address for the record.
My name is James Curran. I live at 656 Harvard Street.
Okay, and you're a proponent of this?
I am, yes.
Is that all you want to tell us about it?
So my wife and I are adding a two-car garage with living space over it, just to accommodate a growing family, and so we have a one-car driveway right now, and looking for a two-car driveway.
Thank you. That's right, the parcel currently has 12-feet curb opening, the applicant proposes to remove an additional 14 feet of curbing, resulting in a total combined opening of 26 feet. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? There being no opponents, we'll move on to item number two. Item number two, Mohammed Uden, 693 New Boston Road, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 693 New Boston Road, the curb cut will be on Acacia Street, existing opening is 16 feet, curbing to be removed will be 16 feet, there is no curb to be added, combined opening proposed after alteration is 32 feet. This applicant proposes to create a new 16-foot curb opening that is a distance of 12 feet from the existing 16-feet curb opening. This proposal will result in a combined curb opening of 32 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Come down, please, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mohammed Uden. Just purchased a new construction house on 693 New Boston Road. They did a two-car garage with the driveway, and then we have three siblings, my dad and my sister, so we have a total of five cars, and it's a small dead-end street, really hard for us to park on the street, and then get like trash removal, and looking at the snow time, it's going to be tough to cleaning, so what we're trying to do is get another 16-inch car, and then we want to do four more driveway, because we have enough land too, so that's why we're asking for additional 16-inch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing no opponents, we will move on to item number three. Brenda DeSilva, 41 Hayfield Lane, for removal of curbing as follows. At 41 Hayfield Lane, existing opening is 16 feet, curbing to be removed is eight feet, there is no curb to be added, combined opening proposed after alteration is 24 feet. This applicant proposes to modify the existing 16-feet curb opening by an additional eight feet, resulting in a total opening of 24 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Seeing no proponents, are there any opponents? Seeing no opponents, we will move on to item number four. Tiberio, Counselor C2?
Do you have any, to the clerk, I'm sorry, do you have any written, anything written opposing or supporting this?
I did not, let me just make sure that we didn't receive anything. I don't believe we did on this. No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Do you have any to any other of the public hearings, ma'am clerk, do you know of?
We did on one.
And will you just?
We haven't, we haven't gotten to that one yet, but yes.
When we do, you just?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, Tiberio Jacinto, 245 Fieldstone Lane, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 245 Fieldstone Lane, the existing opening is 16 feet, curb to be removed is eight feet, there is no curb to be added, combined opening proposed after alteration will be total of 24 feet. This applicant proposes to modify the existing 16-foot curb opening by an additional eight feet, resulting in a total opening of 24 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five. Michael Ozog, 34 Manton Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 34 Manton Street, the existing opening is 16 feet, curb to be removed is 5.2 feet, curbing to be added is none, combined opening proposed after alteration is 21.2 feet. This applicant proposes to modify the existing 16-foot curb opening that currently accesses the property at 34 Manton Street. The owner requests to extend the existing opening by 5.2 inches, which will align the opening with the existing driveway beyond the city sidewalk. This proposal will result in a total opening of 21 feet, two inches. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Please come down and state your name, please, and address for the record.
Michael Ozog, 34 Manton Street, removal of the curb will not affect on-street parking.
That's good to know. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Palit, hold on, Mr. Ozog, we might have a question for you.
I was up there today. You got 16-foot open.
Yeah.
And you got the driveway that's right against that wall that you got there. You're taking five feet out of there, which I don't think you need at all. How many cars you parking here?
Two.
Two.
Yeah, but.
And the wall, what are you going to do with the wall?
What wall?
What, am I blind? I don't see the wall there. There's a wall there. With the five feet you want to take out, there's a wall right there, at the end of your driveway. I was there today.
Well, it's off-centered from the other garage, and it's difficult to get in and out, because a lot of people park right against my driveway, and I have difficulties.
Let me tell you, you're going up the street this way, you're turning, turning left. You're not coming down to turn right.
I back in, because the, I can't, I can't see traffic, I would back out, I have to drive out.
Well, I, you know, parking's tough there, you got two already, and you want to snag another one.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not going to affect the parking. The parking is over, oversized.
You know, you've got to think of your neighbors, too. I mean, I want to send this to committee, unless you guys want to do what you want to do with it, but I don't think it's fair, if you can park two, and take that piece out, the driveway, and there's a wall right there.
But that spot is oversized for one car. Some people try to park two cars, then they block my driveway, then have a difficulty getting in and out.
Counselor, if you want to send it to committee, there will be appropriate things, it's a game back and forth at this particular moment.
Let me make a motion after send it to committee.
A second.
While they can go over and look at it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ozog. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents?
We did have someone, Mr. President, we did have someone call the office that wasn't an opponent, to register as an opponent.
Okay, is that all she did, or do you want to give her name and address for the record?
Yep, there was a Carlos Aruda at 48 Manton Street that's registered as an opponent.
Okay, so maybe we should refer to a committee and have them both come down and find out why it should or should not come. Okay. Hearing no opponents, we'll move on to the next one. Item number six, David Pike, 91 Globe Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 91 Globe Street, existing opening 11 feet on Foot Street, curb to be removed 16 feet on Globe Street, there is no curb to be added, combined opening proposed after alteration is 27 feet. The parcel currently has an 11-foot curb opening on Foot Street, the applicant proposes to remove an additional 16 feet of curbing on Globe Street, resulting in a total combined opening of 27 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Please come down, sir, state your name and address for the record.
David Pike, 91 Globe Street. The reason I need this, I have a camper, and trying to get out onto Foot Street is very difficult, because it's a one-way street now. Going down Globe Street would be a lot easier, a lot safer. No one parks in front of my house anyways, and I am on the hydrant side, so even when there's storms, no one would be needed to park there, over there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pike. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Opponents? Seeing now, seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven. Catahoula Development LLC, PO Box 1983, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 351 Danforth Street, existing opening is 22 feet, curbing to be removed 74 feet, curb to be added 16 feet, combined opening proposed after alteration will be 80 feet. The parcel currently has a 22-foot curb opening, the applicant proposes to construct an eight-unit townhouse development. Each unit will require 10-foot curb opening, resulting in a total combined opening of 80 feet. Of the existing curb opening, 16 feet will be closed, the remainder of which falls within one of the proposed 10-foot openings. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Please come down and state your name and address.
Good evening, Frank Marconi, 31 Semble Village Road, Attleboro, Massachusetts. Mr. President and Counselors, we purchased a parcel on Danforth Street between Cedar and Walnut. The parcel is directly behind the animal rescue league. We have a proposed four-unit duplex townhouse styles. Each unit will have underground parking, in other words, a garage, in addition to the driveway. So there'd be two parking spaces per unit, and we believe that we've taken no parking from the area, and it's also worth mentioning, this is a blighted lot that has sat there for a while.
Excuse me, Frank, you said four units? The paperwork says eight units.
Yes, Mr. President, it's eight units, but it's four duplexes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Counselor C3, Counselor Kilby?
Just through, been through planning already? Has planning approved it?
Yes, it's been through planning, site review, Mr. Furlong's office.
So it's been approved?
Yes, yes, it has, yes.
Okay, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C2, Counselor Vice President Deion?
So if I'm understanding it correctly, one unit will have underground parking, one unit will have, say, four units will have underground parking, four units will have driveway parking?
No, no, ma'am. Each unit has a garage underneath, and the driveway.
Okay, so there's two parking spaces under the building for each unit, and the driveway gives them access to that?
Well, there's one parking space in the garage, and one parking in the driveway.
All right, thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Marshall.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President and Counselors, thank you.
Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Hearing none, and that being the final public hearing, let's entertain a motion to close.
We shouldn't have closed the public hearing.
Second. Do we have to complete the motion?
I'm sorry, I apologize. We have number, item number eight, tax classification. Adoption of the percentage of local tax levy to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year 2023. Will the proponents please come down?
Yes, Counselor President, before we start, we have to reconvene our meeting. We had a recess prior meeting, and I just need a quick motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go back into session.
Speaking of Mike, yeah, the mic.
Right here. Mr. Chairman, I move we go back into session.
I second that. Roll call, Rich Wilson? Rich Gonzalez, yes time?
6:19.
6:19, we're back into open session at the City Council chambers.
Mr. Gonzalez, you must like working with that committee. Very simple.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're here to set the classification factor, or basically, we don't set it, you people do, we're here to recommend. And before I do that, I, every year I come to this group, and I pretty much state what's happened throughout the year, what's going on, how we compare to some of the communities, and there's a lot of paperwork here, excuse me here, but this has been a great year for us. And what I mean by that is our values, our total residential values have gone up 12%. Commercials have gone up 1%. Personal property, and let me find that for you, please. Have gone up 59%, and our total net worth of the city now is over $7 billion, would it be? And our new growth, now new growth has been set at $3,743,846. The breakdown of the new growth is residential 39.5%, commercial industrial 4.6%, personal property 55.9%. And the reason for the growth in personal property, it's been a banner year, are utility companies. We value all the gas lines that are underground, we value poles and wires, and that alone has brought in $67 million just in the gas lines. The Liberty Gas Company has been a very good partner with us, they have repaired 15 miles of gas line, which is an incredible amount, so when we drive by and we see the trucks out there, and we say to ourselves, there's an inconvenience, that inconvenience relates to tax dollars at the end of the day, because they're replacing these lines. So from that perspective, we had an excellent year. And I did a little study this afternoon, and I wanted to go back to our new growth, and, because I've been involved with the city for quite a while, and I go back onto Gateway, and you can only go back on the Gateway since 2002. So when I went back onto Gateway in 2002 to 2023, 3.7 million was the, is the highest that I can recall. There may be other years that I wasn't around for, but that is a, that is a good size. And at, just to give you a reference, 2002, when they were keeping these numbers on Gateway, it was $411,000. Last year was our largest number, and that was $3,379,723. Now, before I get into any stats, I remember coming here quite a few times, and I would remember Counselor President Kamara asking us all the time, how do we compare to New Bedford? New Bedford, New Bedford is where we want to compare to, right? So when I look at the numbers, and I'll find them. So New Bedford hasn't set their rate yet, and they haven't set their values, so we're ahead of them on that end. So when I look at, when I look at last year's values versus this year's values, and our market's gone up 12%, and I would equate their market going up at least the same, because real estate is, is going up, and the reason why it goes up that amount is because we have to use 2,021 sales, we cannot use 22 for our majority, and that's the years of, there was a lot of appreciation. So we have to, we have to abide by the DOR rules, and they have to as well. So I, you know, again, I don't work for New Bedford, but I can tell you this, that that market is, is going up the same. I worked for other communities, and the 12% to 15% range is what's happening. So what I did was, I was ultra-conservative, I just used last year's numbers. So right now, our new number in Fall River, the average, the median, not the average, because last time Counselor Kadeem had asked me, come back with the median, and I did. So I'm using the median of 313,000 even. New Bedford's median from last year was 260,925. That's a $52,000 increase, us higher than New Bedford. Now, what does that mean? Well, it means investment-wise, we're a better investment. And our values are 20% worth more, Fall River versus New Bedford. Now, let's talk taxes. Taxes, New Bedford's rate last year was $4,054.77, that was the average tax bill. If you, and I'm not telling this counsel what to do, so I use the worst-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is at 1.75, which is, which is kind of like where, excuse me, where you're maxed out. At 1.75, that would equate to the median being $3,840.51, with $214.26 less right now with that scenario. And I can tell you this, at the end of the day, it's going to be higher than New Bedford, because I'm sure their, their values are going up, and I'm sure their levy is going up as well. And by the way, New Bedford has a $20 million excess, I shouldn't say excess levy capacity, but their levy is $20 million more than we do. They're around, if where, I believe our levy is, what was it?
About $24 million.
Yeah, 24 million, 24 million more. So that's the numbers that I see on comparisons. What I did in the charts that I sent to you was, I did it in different scenarios up from the 175. It really doesn't pay to go beyond, because you're at a level now, 175 is the maximum shift, that you're shifting to the commercials. So anything below that line, what it simply means is that the residents are paying more. So at that case, when I look at the numbers, and let me find them, bear with me. So at the 175 shift, which is, again, the maximum, the median price family increase, again, on 313,150 for the year, is $259.53. That's the number. And then anything below that, the numbers simply go up as you, as you decide to, to go below 175, you're shifting more to the residents. Questions?
Councilor C, I'm sorry, Councilor C three, Councilor Kilby?
Yeah, my, my question's really been answered. I was going to ask about the new growth compared to, you know, prior years, and you, you answered that. So we're at 1.75 now.
Right.
And, um, the increase, new growth increase is 1% for commercial, and how much is it for residential again?
The, the residential's are going to go up, uh, $259.53. I apologize, I didn't talk about the commercials. So what's, what's happening with the commercials are, the commercials are going down. So at the max, the commercials are going down, and that's no fault of our own. They're going down $829.97 on a, on a $689,000 assessment. That's what's happening.
And, um, as Councilor Kamari says all the time, I was going to ask about the New Bedford comparison too, which you answered. So we're at one, you know, I'd be just in favor of staying where we are, 1.75, so. And that, you're, what's the administration's recommendation?
Uh, what, I don't speak for the administration, but, but I would say you're at the max, and anything below that means you're shifting more to the residents.
Right, I agree. Thank you. I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor C eight, Councilor Washington.
That was a very conveigorating presentation. Thank you. That was exciting.
Thank you.
So if I'm hearing correctly, I just want to clarify, the city is in really good fiscal standing.
That's correct.
And if I'm hearing correctly, it's one of the best years since 2002.
That's correct.
So I think the residents at home need to hear that, that the city is in good standing right now.
And, and let me say this, it's in, I look at new growth as an investment. So people spend their money wisely, and they're investing in the city. They have faith, they have hope in government, and I, and I say that every time I come, until I see the numbers drop. When those numbers start to dip, we can't sell a house anymore, and I, and I, we have to have areas that are boarded up because we can't move the property. That means a combination of a few things. Government's not working. And, and I see this policy here, the government's working, everybody's working together. And, and the way I see it, and I've been involved for 41 years in this business, investment in this city has never been that high.
That is amazing to me. So that, I wanted to touch on that, 41 years of your experience, and you are saying that Fall River is a good city to invest in.
Absolutely. I, I'm here, I ain't leaving.
That's fantastic. With that, I yield. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor C two, Councilor Deanna.
Yeah, thank you. So the increase would be $259 a year. What portion of that is the, um, debt exclusion for Durfee High School? It's, it's still not broken out, which we were told it would be broken out on the tax bill, but...
We, we cannot break it out on the tax bill, too.
You can't break it up. You cannot break it up.
The DOR will not allow us to do that.
In the system, you can't break it up. It's one, it's one rate, one number. Your tax bill is one number.
But yet that's a totally separate, um, but yet the Durfee, uh, I, I can't, I have a hard time understanding that, just because the, uh, debt exclusion is a totally different animal from the tax bill. If we didn't have Durfee, you'd have a specific number for the taxes. So you're adding the debt exclusion to it. I just feel people should be able to know what Durfee High School is costing them.
I can figure it out for you.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
I had that number, but, uh...
Mr. Gonzales, do you want us to take a one-minute recess, or?
Um...
Mr. President, could I, could I just quickly?
Yeah, you can leave with another question.
Councilor C two, do you yield to Councilor C one?
Sure, I yield.
Councilor C one, Councilor Kadim.
Just a point of information. I know the council has been requesting this for, uh, quite some time now, but the Department of Revenue has a, an actual spreadsheet that you can just plug in. Uh, for any type of debt exclusion, you put the dollar amount in there, and it'll, it'll tell you what the impact's going to be on the tax rate for, if it's a 20-year bond or a 30-year bond. Um, so I don't, I don't know where Councilor C two, uh, would like to go with this, but, um, I, I think it's something that can be generated, you know, moving forward. I can forward the link over to the administration in terms of the, uh, you know, where you can find that, that spreadsheet.
We can get an answer for you, Councilor. Councilor Kadim, we can just, all you do is eliminate the debt, so you have a different tax bill. There are differences.
You can, but it, it, there's a little bit more that goes into that, because it impacts the tax rate with the value. So you, you will know for every hundred thousand dollars, the impact of the tax rate will be for, specifically for the debt exclusion, so.
I, I, but, but I, I guess, uh, when I look at it, and this year you guys are using, uh, $2,225,000.
$2,250.
Yeah, 250. So if you use that number, it, it equates to something like, out of the total, uh, excess in our levy, um, it, it equates to like 2% of the total levy, because it's two, it's 2 million, if you take the two, 2 million, and divide that to...
2.5.
2.5. And if we divide that by the, uh...
It's 2,250.
Right. And if we divide that by the, um, estimated levy is 126, is that the number we're using?
Yes.
It's 2%, 2% of the bill.
Yeah, but I, I think they're looking for a specific dollar amount, right? So for every, every hundred thousand dollars, is it $20, is it $50, is it $100?
Yeah.
So, but I guess, instead of just trying to work it, all I'm suggesting is that there is a spreadsheet that is, that's already built. All you need to do is plug in three or four numbers, and it will generate for the 20 years each year what the taxpayer will expect to pay.
Yeah, because one, because once that debt is paid, it comes off the tax rule.
Right, correct.
So I think people just need to know what the dollar amount is, they can anticipate when it'll come up off the tax rule. Um, you know, it was promised from day one that that would happen. It would be a separate line item on the tax bill. And it, and it's been told more than once that it can happen, and I think people just, they're paying the bill, they're paying the taxes, they're paying to build the school, they just need to know the bottom line.
Well, one thing we did is what they, uh, I guess the last time that the, the issue was, uh, go in, uh, for the preliminary bill, we added on. So that impact is probably going to be if, when, when the taxpayer looks at his actual bill, when it comes out, and when we, when he looks at his preliminary bill that we did, it's probably only like maybe, I want to say between a 15 and $140 increase for the whole year. Because when we come up with these numbers of 200, uh, $259 on, on the median house, chances are, the preliminary bill went out an extra 225. So that'll be the difference. So that was a good move that was done, because impact-wise, what happens is they would look at, the taxpayer, they would look at the, the, uh, actual bill, and look at their preliminary bill, and see the increase of, let's say, 300 or 400. Multiply that times four times, and that's not really what's happening. That's for the full year. And then we would have a lot of calls in the office saying, hey, my bill went up $1,200, and that's not what happened. It went up four, what you have to do is compare your actual to your prelim, the difference, and then divide it by four. That's, that's how you do it. But the fact of the matter is that when we increase the prelim, that's going to minimize those phone calls, because we're not going to see those large increases.
And we, I, I, we will get that number for you, but I believe we provided something at the budget time for the Durfee debt exclusion and the cost. I just have to put my finger back on that document.
How, how long will it take you to get that to us? A week, two weeks?
Uh, no, I mean, I'm going to look at it in, in the next few days.
Okay, thank you.
Right, that would be appreciated.
I apologize. I had that, I had that number the other day. I did the breakup of, I actually did what 2 and 1/2 was percentage-wise from the, uh, increase of the, of the 259. I had what 2 and 1/2 was, what the Durfee, uh, the debt exclusion was, and I also had what, um, the, um, new growth was. The new growth, I can tell you this, the new growth is your largest figure.
So it's like $65.
Yeah, $65. That's what it boils down to. It's 65 for 2 and 1/2, 65 for the high school, that's right.
On the median house of...
On the median house of that 259.
The median of 313.
Yes.
Right. That's what it boils down to. And the rest of it, right, is the new growth, because your new growth is 3.7. See, with 2 and 1/2, you're only bringing in, like, pretty close to that 2 and 1/2 million dollars.
So that's basically 1,875 a quarter.
That's right, if you want to look at it that way, from the high school. But it's even less than that. The fact of the matter is, we pre-built them in the preliminary.
We, we estimated the building.
Right, we estimated the bill to, to minimize that burden, the impact.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, my only other comment would be, I would support, um, Councilor C three with leaving it at a 1.75. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. And the Council brings up a good point. There are a lot of people who do want to know what that Durfee, uh, separate bill would be, and how long it's going to take to pay it off, and how it's affecting them. So I think it's important that you get that to us, and appreciate you doing that in the next few weeks. Thank you. Councilor C seven, Councilor Repozzo?
Yeah, really good question. I just want to know what the property types are, um, on the assessment classification report. So 101s, I understand, have single families?
Go ahead, read them out.
102s?
102s condos.
Okay, 103, 109?
Miscellaneous, uh, 109s, two houses on a lot.
104?
Two-family.
105?
Three-family.
111 and 125?
Apartment buildings.
With how many units?
Uh, 111s are four to, four to eight units. Uh, there's a 112, you don't see it.
Yeah.
A 112 is over eight units.
Um, and then the other three are?
Vacant land. 130 to 132. 130's buildable, 132's not buildable.
And which one?
A 106, there's a 106.
Yep.
The 106 means if you have vacant land with a foundation on it, that's, that's called our building, a garage or whatever. Not a house, but a building.
Okay. And then, uh, 12 to 43? 012 to 043?
Mixed use, commercials, different types.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Alright, there being no further questions, I want to thank all of you for coming down as opponents. Thank you very much.
Councilman, uh, President, may I say two things, and I don't want to forget. Uh, first one is, I'd like to thank the cooperation of the council, the administration, my board. I should I say my board, the board that I represent, Rich Wilson, Nancy Heino, Bridget, Seth, and I hope I don't miss anybody, but the office staff, they've been tremendous. I've been in, heavily involved in teaching them. Uh, they're doing a wonderful job, and I can tell you this, the city's getting very, very complicated, because it's growing, and then next year we have a revow. We have, right now, a team that's out there doing house-to-house measure-enlisting. They're almost complete. And the cooperation, most of all, that we got from the citizens of Fall River, has been excellent. And that, what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Wilson to, um, re- recon, re- re, uh...
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm getting old. Uh, second that, roll call? Yes, time?
6:49.
6:49. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you, Richard.
It's a great committee that, uh, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
We shouldn't have closed the public hearing.
I'm sorry, Councilor C one, Councilor Kadim, before we close?
No, no, not, not opposed, just a point of information.
Okay, go ahead.
So a colleague in C two was just asking about the impact of the value, so on the $2,250,000, the assessed, on an assessed value of 250,000, the impact of the tax rate would be $60. Assessed value of 350,000 would be $84. 450,000 dollar assessed value would be $108. 550,000 would be $132. 650,000 would be $156. 750,000 would be $180, and then 850,204, like, I can continue.
Those, those annual, annual costs, correct?
Yeah, based on, based on the FY20 tax rate. I'm sorry, FY22.
Thank you, Councilor, for that information. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion closed, made by Councilor Repozzo, seconded by Councilor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, have it. Time has now come to, uh, public hearing is closed. The City Council Committee on Finance will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Kadim?
Here.
Deanna?
Here.
Kilby?
Yep.
La Liberty? Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Repozzo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
And President Kamara.
Here. I just want to make a statement that Council Liberty had called the clerk's office and said that, um, I think she was traveling, and her flight either got delayed or postponed, and she had a difficult time getting back into the city tonight. Just want to make that clear. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First, we have a couple of individuals that want to speak before us. First, we have Colin Dias, subject matter, MBTA.
Thank you, um, Council President and members of the City Council. I wanted to speak today, on Election Day, regarding the agenda for the City Council going forward. Um, I believe there's some areas the council could work to, to address the issues of housing and affordability issues in this community. I believe, short-term, and I, we've seen it at the last meeting, um, we could support our local parks, work towards supporting our local parks. Our infrastructure's very important. In other ways, we can do, we can support, we can, we shouldn't vote for every property tax fee increase that the administration proposes. We can look on how we can pay, close all, all the pay increases we all complain about every single year in the budget. Pay increases that are, again, not in accordance with ordinance sometimes, um, some of these positions that we see in unaffordable housing. And I know other communities have looked into other ways we can look into this. We can restructure our zoning laws. I know Boston's created an Affordable Housing Task Force. That's something that our cities down here in the South Coast should look into. The City Council can hold the administration accountable and, and assure they are not holding back on applying for any grant, state, federal grant funding for market, for affordable housing. City Council can make sure, and the city can make sure that market rate developers, the politically connected, aren't getting any favors from the administration when they go through a fair, as they go through a fair process, as all others. And, and just speaking on comments from the last meeting, I believe this, the campaign that was against joining the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, again, it wasn't a vote for rail service, it was a vote to join or not the MBTA. I don't think anyone here hates trains, anti-train. I think it was about acknowledging that this city has not taken any steps to address the affordability issues that we face, and that we want to see an administration that addresses them. It's a city that's not prepared, and I think it's the responsibility of, of our officials to come up with positive, concrete issues to address them, and hopefully we can do so going into the next election. And I will say, I believe it is disheartening when we hear comments from the last City Council meeting. If you don't move forward, you're moving backwards. Or if you're listening to podcasts and you hear your elected official say you're afraid if you do not vote to join the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority. Um, I believe it was con, fomenting con, fomenting language such as that, that we avoid discussing is, discussing issues just to appease supporters of a ballot question. I believe that's not only a disservice to the community, I believe that is the way you move a community back. I believe that's not only a disservice to the community, I believe that is the way you move a community backwards. And I think it's the cast aspersions on how, or assumptions on how voters feel about a ballot question, assuming why they don't support a ballot question, is not becoming to the city. We should listen to both sides of any ballot issue that comes before the city. And, and I thank you for your time, Council President, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nelson Vasquez, subject matter, moment of truth.
Uh, Nelson Vasquez, two ten Sunset Hill, Far River. Um, just real quick, uh, we're going to know how financially, financially strong the city is once an opium money is gone, because, um, that's, second moment of truth is coming very soon. You know, it's been a great pleasure bringing the facts to the people about, uh, bringing in this former transportation into our city. We don't know how this vote's going to go, but given the, uh, inflation being one of those reasons and, uh, energy costs going up for families, as, uh, it was reported over six, six, sixty percent. You know, Milton Friedman once said, there's no such thing as a free lunch. Residents in New Bedford are already being displaced. Those LLCs are not even waiting until the end of this election today. And that was a couple of weeks ago. To, to hear one side say on the airwaves and publicly, don't worry about it if you vote for this, you don't have to worry about anything. This, if the people vote for this, is going to bear down a very, very horrible human toll on homeowners and renters. And it's not going to be long before people start pointing their finger, and the thing is, they're not going to point the finger at me, Colin, or anybody else who votes with us. They're going to point the finger at everyone who said publicly to vote for this. It's just to, to hear, and I have respect for Council Pereira, and I have respect for all elected officials. But if you're going to advocate, it's your fiduciary, fiduciary obligation to advocate all sides of the equation to know what the people should expect. Because to insinuate that they don't have to worry about any financial burden is ludicrous. And given the, the financial, uh, atrocity with the MBTA, as reported by Channel Five, it's only going to leave our city with more uncertainty if our residents say yes. Everything we said is factual and is proven to be right. So, um, I, I look forward to seeing what this vote is, but if the city votes no, just take it from me. You will be, you, you will say hallelujah by not jumping on board onto that track, because if this question passes today, in January, you can expect our residents, renters, to, to, to receive those eviction notices, and we already seen a post online of someone who lives here already receiving a notice to evict. Like, this, this is, this is going to be?
Mr. Vasquez, thirty seconds left.
Yes, sir. So, um, you know, thank you for your time, and, uh, once again, I appreciate everyone taking part in this election, both sides. And, uh, let's see how it goes, thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution, the administration, the administrator of Community Utilities investigate the possibility of harvesting energy from specially designed in-pipe turbines. Which table, it was adopted on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, please come down, Mr. Phil. Let me give us an update, please, on the resolution and where we're at.
Yes, good evening, Council. So, on the resolution that was, uh, that was provided to me, I went and I, uh, took a late look at, uh, in-pipe turbines, uh, hydropower essentially, uh, being able to be put into, uh, drinking water system. Um, through the research that I did, there is some communities, uh, Portland, Oregon being one of them, as well a couple of California that have used this type of technology. Um, and I did a lot of, uh, internet research on different companies that, uh, have looked at this type of technology. Technology's been around since, uh, early, mid to two thousands. Some of the requirements of this technology that you're looking for within its particular type of, uh, infrastructure system would be, uh, something with a high static head, so that means water's way up high and you're trying to move it to way down low. Um, you're trying to do that without the use of pumps, uh, or electricity. You're looking at large transmission lines, uh, anywhere from twenty-four was, uh, was, uh, one of the smaller sized transmission lines that they like to put these in, up to ninety-six inch, uh, transmission lines. The other type of systems that these would be good for is ones that are pressure reducing valves or, or that have, uh, lower pressure zones, so if you have, uh, you know, part of your system is pumped at a certain pressure, uh, but you have another section of your system that's lower, and you have to go through a pressure reducing valve, uh, potentially rather than going through a pressure reducing valve, uh, you could potentially go through a hydro power in pump unit to be able to do that. Uh, that's pretty much usually one connection point. Uh, the other thing that they also look at when they look at these is, uh, a constant velocity and a constant flow through the system. Uh, so you don't, they don't, they really don't like variability or change, uh, and they always like to, uh, run at, uh, uh, higher velocity typically. Far River Water System, uh, is an extremely, uh, robust water system, uh, started back in eighteen seventy, uh, was the, uh, original, uh, implementation of the Far River Water Department. Uh, back through the, uh, early eighteen, the late eighteen, eighteen hundreds up to the early nineteen hundreds, uh, the city was growing and, uh, installing its infrastructure. Uh, it created a very, uh, branch network, a s- network system that we have. Uh, so, most of the system is, uh, fed, uh, in multiple different ways through multiple different parts of the city. Um, which with these types of system creates, uh, a bit of an issue. Um, so, our system is, would be really tough to look to install some of these, uh, some of these, um, in-pipe turbines. The type of system that you would like, so if you look at, uh, Portland, Oregon, um, they have a reservoir that is high up on the mountain. Uh, they have two parallel above-ground transmission lines that feed from those reservoirs, uh, come all the way down and gravity feed through the whole entire city. Um, so that's where they were able to, uh, implement some of, some of these turbines. Uh, the other thing that we do not have in our system, we do not have any pressure reducing valves throughout our whole entire system. As I said, our system is branched very well, so the pressure that everybody receives, the one thing that we do have is two elevated pressure zones, uh, one in the far north end, the industrial park, one in the far south end, down next to, uh, Haskell Hill. Uh, so we actually have to have booster pumps that pump the water up to elevate the pressure with, within those areas. Um, the robust branch system that we have, uh, is very good for fire protection and being able to provide, uh, constant flow. Uh, if we were to try to, um, minimize that branching, to be able to funnel water through a pers- a specific area, um, or one of these turbine systems, um, it could potentially impact fire flow to particular areas of the system, um, the way that our distribution network is set up. The largest pipe that we have within our system is a thirty-six inch, uh, that feeds, uh, from our plant down on Bedford Street, up Bedford Street, uh, to Eastern Avenue. Uh, after that, we're pretty much twenty-four and smaller throughout our whole entire system. Uh, so, so looking at that, that was some of the things, uh, that I found. Again, I did a lot of research on this, um, I spoke with, uh, um, I spoke with?
That's right, Mr. Phil, we got a couple of Councilors that want to get some questions answered.
Okay.
Councilor Seat Six, Councilor Pereira?
Um, Mr. Phil, and who, what company did you contact? Did you contact any company and talk to them?
Yep, so I spoke, uh, with, uh?
Which company?
Lucidity, uh, which was a company that, uh, was out of Portland, Oregon, I contacted them, uh, and they looked at typically larger systems. Uh, so, that was the, uh, the larger one that I found. I spoke with a contact from, uh, Bangor, Maine, who, uh, they looked to install, they had a, uh, local company that was into this type of, uh, power, and, uh, they, uh, they went, they looked to install them, I think it was, uh, in the two thousand eight, two thousand nine timeframe.
Did you talk to any companies that developed these turbines? Any of those companies, the companies that?
Lucidity was one of the one, companies that developed.
And Bangor, Maine was just the city itself?
Yeah, it was the municipality that I spoke with.
So the only one was Lucidity?
Yep.
To talk about that, all right. I'm, Mr. President, this resolution was filed on December fourteenth in twenty twenty-one. Part of this resolution was that a presentation be delivered to the Committee on Finance within ninety days. We're well over ninety days. If, um, you know, I think we brought this forward to see if this was another way to save money. If it's not, I don't need to hear a whole dissertation of when the Water Department started or whatever, and I know that Mr. Phil is trying to do the best he can, and it's not his fault that this resolution took so long to get here. But I would give it motion leave to withdraw and move on to the next item on the agenda.
We just have one more, Councilor, and I agree with Councilor, but I can't just?
Thank you, no, that's fine.
Get the bridge forward so we can?
I yield, thank you.
Councilor Seat Two, Councilor Deion?
Thank you. Well, I guess, I was just going to try to get to the crux of it. Um, basically, the question is, is the return on investment or the savings worth the investment? Because if it isn't, I agree. Grant leave to withdraw, if we have a system that is not conducive and isn't going to help, it's not worth you spinning your wheels and anybody wasting their time.
Correct.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Just so my colleagues understand, this is in the Committee on Finance.
And you're trying to clean it up?
We need to clean it up, so I don't want to just get rid of it and not give it any attention. We can have the discussion, we can have him say whether it's a go or not a go, and we can dispose of it as we're doing right now.
I give it motion leave to withdraw.
Motion's been made to give leave to withdraw by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate it.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Phil for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Next, we have a discussion on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three first quarter budget report. Do you want to give us a brief overview of the budget, to tell us where we're standing, if there's any deficits in any departments we should be worried about, or? And it'll take, entertain questions from the Councilors, please.
So you should have all received, um, an updated?
Yep.
Quarter one revenue. As you can see, uh, we're a quarter of the way through the fiscal year, and we've received about a quarter of our revenues, and we've expended in some departments a quarter, but overall in the whole city, just under, I think it's about fifteen, yeah, fifteen percent of our expenditures. I think we're doing very well and watching what we're spending and what we're buying. And, uh, I can entertain any questions.
Councilor Seat Two, Councilor Reposo? I'm sorry, Councilor Seat Seven, Councilor Reposo?
Quick question on the local receipts, can you clarify what the non-recurring local receipts are?
Yep, so there's, um, some miscellaneous receipts that get in there, and the, the big item in that right now is the opioid money that had come down. So, that will, we will be coming to you to move that money, um, out of that, but the way the Commonwealth, it had to come in through a local receipt, so that's where we had to put it.
And what was that total?
Uh, the opioid money, that's, is about a hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Okay, and then the remaining balance?
Um, I don't know the details of all of that, but it's, like, I think it just literally? It's just miss, I'd have to have to get details of what is in the forty-seven thousand, the miscellaneous non-recurring receipts.
Can you share that when you have a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. Without a yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Seat Two, Councilor Deion?
Yeah, the marijuana excise, is that lagging somewhat, and it's only at seventeen and a half percent?
So the way that the marijuana excise tax comes in and it, and it's back, the way it goes back to the, the previous months, and then you get it later, it's, it's a little longy how that does come down, so it doesn't come down exactly like all the other excise taxes from, from, uh, the state.
Solid waste, other charges, thirty percent, um, what would that be in terms of receipts? It's on that same first page.
So I thi- I believe most of that is made up of when, like, somebody's disposing of a mattress or like large items.
Okay. Have we been doing better with people paying for what they want to get rid of as opposed to just randomly dumping it?
Any improvement is better than random dumping. Uh, so I would say that, uh, there's been a number of things that, especially since, uh, Mr. Denme has taken over oversight of, of DCM and the Lewis Street Facility. Um, uh, he's put in place a number of, of measures where they've centralized how they're taking cash for those tickets. So I think we are doing much better, uh, I think the team down there generally has been doing a really great job, um, of figuring out, uh, I figure out the best way to, to track that cash to make sure that people are paying for, uh, what they're getting rid of. Um, it was certainly, it was before this fiscal year, but, uh, I know that, uh, uh, Charlie was already looking for, uh, I think a different way to get rid of mattresses, so there's a lot of changes that have been happening there, and I think it's led to some improvements. Like, you'll see we're ahead of the game by the end of the year.
That's good, that's good to hear. Um, I'd like to jump to city expenses, page two. Um, reserve fund expenses, we have unclassified, um, reserve fund. I didn't bring my budget book, I feel like that number changed from the budget book to now.
Should not have changed, that's the same unreserved, that was?
Yeah, I didn't bring the budget book with me, shame on me. Um, there was, there was a discrepancy in the number, and that's what I wanted to ask about, but I don't have the budget book with me at the moment.
So just, just as a reminder, one of the things we talked about when we did the budget is that, um, all the money that we thought we might need for increases as part of the, the respective collective bargaining agreements, the different union agreements that we were going to reach but had not yet reached, was all put in that reserve. Um, so we would have the money when we needed it. Um, so that's what that was, uh, if you recall.
Um, I'm going to, I'm going to look for it, because I feel like for some reason, this number is higher than what was in the original budget, and I, my curiosity was why, what the discrepancy was. Um, so on page, the very next page, which is page seven? How do you go from that? Hmm, uh, let's see, other governmental expenses from the general fund for reserve fund. Governmental expenses are increased, so the effect, uh, I don't know. Don't mind me, I'm off, that was not what I wanted, that was a whole, all right, never mind. Now I know where I went, I took that from the budget book. Hang on. Okay, yes, so I did, I took it from the budget book. So in the budget book, it was two million, six hundred thousand, four twenty-nine. And here in quarter one, it's two million, eight hundred seventy-eight thousand, four twenty-nine. So there was a two hu- almost, uh, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar discrepancy, that's what was my question. How that changed by that much from the budget book to the quarter one report?
I will look into that, there must, they would have combined something to get to that number, but I will look into that.
Yeah, that was page seven in the budget book, so I did bring it with me. I did bring it with me anyways. Okay, so, good, I feel better. Okay, under, uh?
Can I just get a clarification? When you say, um, they put it in, who is working on this budget proposal? Who puts this together, is it your department?
This is the city auditors that puts together this. So this is a manual process that takes well over a week to put together.
Okay.
And we're actually, we are putting things in, um, some procedures in place to streamline this, so that it won't take a full week to put together. And there won't be this manual of adding, there's over two thousand accounts in the general fund.
Okay.
So we're trying to reduce, like, any kind of combin- you know, combining accounts.
All right, just, I got a question, I got to ask this.
It's, it's just that two hundred and seventy-eight thousand is, is a considerable number.
I agree, but I just need to find this out as well. Is, um, Mr. I Capone still working for the city as a consultant or in any capacity?
He is.
And, Seth, how, how much longer is he going to be consulting, do we know? I mean, what's, what's, how much money are we paying him? It's, he's, I know? It's, he's, I know we had him before. We had treasure in place and everyone else. But now, how long is he, what's the plan with Mr. Iacapone? And is he just going to be here for how long?
So it's certainly not to have him here indefinitely. He's been an invaluable resource and I think has really helped with the transition with the new CFO, new auditor. We have a number of young people in there. But at this point, his time is significantly reduced from what it was last year. And we'll continue to reduce that time. We're very much in the midst of putting a plan together to figure out how much longer we need Mr. Iacapone, as well as assessing all of the different talents and resources in the, on the financial team and how that team is working. So I can have a better answer for you probably at some point in the next couple of weeks, because I know that we're, we're talking about that. The CFO has just put in place a pretty remarkable new software package. It's going to help with modeling and planning. It's also going to help with labor negotiations going forward so we understand what the impact of different agreements are going to be. Just a much more intentional way of going forward, which I think to some extent that was what Mr. Iacapone provided in the interim between Ms. Sahadi and Ms. Almond. And so I think the need for his presence is lessening because there are so many very, very competent people doing good work here now. So I see that.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. If we need to train people quicker, let's just find out a way to do it. I mean, Mr. Iacapone, I think he's been around for quite a long some time. And if he's working less and people getting trained less, let's just try to get him here more and train them quicker so they can get on and we can move on. Because I guess he's not very inexpensive.
Understood. No, that's a very fair point, Mr. President. And, and we have every intention of continuing to lessen our reliance, not just on Mr. Iacapone, but on consultants in general.
Okay. Thank you so much for the answering that. I appreciate it. Counselor C two, you still have the floor. I apologize for that. Just had to get that out.
On page three, under Auditor's Office, there was a retirement, apparently an unexpected retirement buyout. Hundred and, I mean, $19,728 that wasn't budgeted for. And I, I know I saw a couple of other buyouts that seemed to be unexpected. How many, how many total buyouts did we have that we weren't anticipating? And how does that affect the fact that those weren't budgeted for originally?
So the one that happened in the orders, it was not anticipated. We unfortunately lost a valuable employee to the school department. So we, you know, that was not, we wouldn't have known that at budget time. And there's been a few others in some other departments that if they don't let us know. So we are moving forward to start, my practice will be to budget, to try to anticipate. So as I'm meeting with department heads, we discuss that.
So the thing about buyouts is that they're not limited to retirements. So if somebody resigns, moves to another position, there's an obligation, obviously, to, with, depending on how they're characterized, if they're part of a union or not, or, you know, they have a contract. I mean, there's a number of different possibilities. But there's an obligation to buy out certain time that they may have on the books. And obviously, you can't necessarily predict when somebody's going to seek another job and move on to another opportunity.
No, I understand that. I understand that. I was just more curious about what the impact was where none of these were budgeted for. Maybe it wasn't significant. Maybe it is significant. So I was just more curious as to the impact. On page four, Treasurer's Office salaries. Actually, there's going to be one, two, at least three or four of them. We have what's referred to as summer hours. Again, in, in the Treasurer's Department, there was nothing budgeted. There's been $1,700 paid out in the Collections Office. $5,683 was budgeted. 57% has already been paid out. In the Computer Room salaries, 57% has already been paid out, again, in summer hours.
So I can, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
So there, I'm not sure what year it ended, but there are some employees that have been with the city for a long time. And in their contract, they received the summer hours. So if an employee moves from one department to another, those summer hours go with them. It doesn't go away until they, you know, leave the city. So that is what's, what's happened is there has been some movement. Some city employees have sought, you know, better opportunities in other departments.
So when it's moved from one department to another, it's considered an expense in that department?
Correct.
Okay.
But that's slowly being phased out. There's not a lot of employees that still have summer hours in the city.
Do we have any idea what percentage at this point do?
I do not have, do not know.
I can get that information for you. I know Mr. Macalini and I have talked about it. It's, my guess is, is it's probably less than 15% at this point, but I can get the exact number.
Okay. And I only have two more. Computer Room expenses, audiovisual multimedia. Again, $300 was budgeted. We've spent $4,321, which is a 1,500% increase. Not going to dispute if it was needed or not needed. But the question is, was that something, again, we couldn't anticipate? What, what, what was, you know, what's the motivating factor behind that one?
So I think part of it is, there were just some, some needed upgrades. So a good example is, like, our treasurer collector, for instance. You know, he's reviewing these enormous spreadsheets and was doing it on a, on a little computer monitor. And so we, you know, we got him, you know, a broader screen that's actually designed for financial people to review, that sort of thing. It's something that he probably would have continued working on if no one had said anything. But I think it was, was realized that it just wasn't the tool that he needed to be, you know, optimal at that job. So I think there was a few expenses there that probably could have been predicted, very candidly. And one of the things that I think CFO Almond has been really remarkable at is looking at needs and identifying those needs and then putting a plan in place to meet those needs. Not necessarily immediately, but over time, within our means as much as we can, and then prioritizing the things that have to be addressed immediately.
Okay. And then my last question would be on page nine, under Election Commission Expenses. Office Equipment and Furniture, zero budgeted, $3,700 expended.
So I think there, as, as you know, we have, you know, sort of the additional burden of really almost like a second simultaneous election with the MTA and that sort of thing. But given that, with early voting, that the actual amount of time and energy that's going into an election lasts for, you know, two more weeks, literally on-site, boots on the ground, than it normally would. So there's resources that were put towards that that I think could have been planned better. I didn't realize it when I came in, because I, at that point, was, was new enough to not realize it, how, jeez, early voting is going to change this significantly. So that's something I've actually already addressed with the Elections Department head. And we're going to be much more thoughtful about how these things can change. And even though some of it's unexpected, that we've got to be ready budget-wise to respond to those changes.
Yeah, I understand that the early voting obviously increases the cost, but, you know, office, equipment, and furniture.
I think it's a rental, because it's.
And it's rentals also. So be rentals of what?
I, I'd have to look at the details.
Yeah, I have to look exactly at what it is. But that's how it's been explained to me, that it has something to do with accommodating some of the new changes. But I can get exactly the list for you if I, no problem.
That would be appreciated.
Sure.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C one, Counselor Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in terms of the overall budget for the first quarter, I know there's usually not a whole lot to report on the first quarter. Is there anything you're anticipating going into second quarter that might be a concern that we should know about now?
The other thing that I do have a concern is, is when the legislature came down and the change in the host fees after everybody's budget was done is very concerning. So we've been watching that very closely and, you know.
Have you gotten any calls in terms of that? Because I've already had a couple of companies reach out.
Yeah, yeah. Not to pay.
So we're talking about the cannabis. And so the legislature significantly changed the structure for cities and towns. And the, you know, there's the excise on that, and that's one thing. But the host fees, we've been significantly limited in how we're able to charge for those. And also, there's a requirement of documentation that is just much more than I think anyone really expected. And it happened after budget time, with it going into effect during this budget cycle. So that's a significant issue that we're, we're looking to address. We're dealing individually with the different entities that are affected by, or, well, that might benefit from it, and trying to work on some solutions.
And what's the, just the impact fees, it's close to $1 million? Is that where it's at? Okay. Can we just, I guess, shift gears to the capital projects? I received a couple of calls from some businesses on Beffet Street just inquiring about the streetscapes. And quite frankly, you know, my, my memory's not that, that good. But I, I really couldn't remember where we stood with the Beffet Street streetscape project. So just looking at this, number one, can we just get an update? And it seems like we're a little bit in a stalemate here. And then I, if we are, I just got a question, because it seems like the original project was slated to cost $2.4 million. That was back in '16. I can only imagine that that's now anywhere from, you know, $4 to $5 million based on construction costs that we're seeing. I know you have four traffic lights that are proposed. I just went out to bid for a traffic light, and that came in $383,000 to $425,000 for one. So my concern, well, once you give the update, my, my only concern is that it seems like we've already went out to the bond market, at least short-term, for almost $2.3 million. So it seems like we're just sitting on some bonds out there and paying interest, and we've only spent $104,000. So just, if we can get an update on that.
Yes. And so I am, we actually had a meeting with our bond advisors. And so we are looking at a lot of these. I'm very concerned about some of this, the way it's been done. But I do, and again, like, whether we're going to ban, it's, the market's kind of volatile right now.
Why, I mean, why would we go out and issue, I guess, even short-term bans on, on projects that, from a cash flow standpoint? I would, I would assume that the cash flow could have been done and we would have planned for.
So, yeah.
And I know you're not, this, you're not here.
I agree with you, and that's why I'm looking at things. And yes, I do things a little differently.
Okay. Because it just, I mean, there were no, there were no expenses coming, coming out. And now we're out in the market and just paying. And now you can't stay short-term, because you only got three years on, on short-term before you go long-term. So I'd be willing to, to venture that we're in the long-term market as, as we speak now. So. Are we, are we? Is, is the project still ongoing? I know we're looking, the notes say that we're going back to mass DOT for the, for the tip, complete streets, road diet, I'm not familiar with, but, and then federal transit funding. Where are we with that? Is that, are we close with that?
So I'm, I don't know specifically exactly where we stand on that. Like, I know that there, each of those things is sort of in different places. And if you were willing to give me a week, two weeks, I can get a much more comprehensive. I could even have maybe Mr. Aggie, our, might come down for the next meeting, if that would be helpful.
Okay.
Just to give you an update on that, because I think he could, he could speak in detail about those things.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. There be no further questions, but thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Entertainer motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn, made by Counsel Pereira, second by Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. Regular city council meeting will begin in five minutes. Regular city councilmen will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libidi?
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Laying in the council chair, please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the communication from the mayor and a proposal to file the Section 108 loan application with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the replacement of fire apparatus.
Motion refer to finance.
Motion for finance has been made by Counselor C one, Counselor Kadim, second by Counselor C two, Counselor Deion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the mayor's request for a loan order in the amount of $1,025,539 for the CPA Central Fire Station in Flora River Fire Museum.
Authorized to be published and refer to finance.
Motion to authorize to be published has been made by Counselor Kadim and refer to finance, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor and the memorandum of agreement between General Teamsters Local 251 and the City of Flora River.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All in favor?
No discussion.
I'm sorry, on the motion. I apologize, Counsel. Counselor C one, Counselor Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, can I get a motion to waive the rules just quickly?
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Could you, who do you want?
I just got a question on the financial impact statement that was provided with the document. So I, I just see one and a half new wage scale, one and a half, one.
Who, who would you like to come down to the chamber?
Oh, I'm sorry, the administration.
Please come down.
So I'm just trying to figure out what the first year cost is going to be. Is that the 2022, 23, and the 21, 22? And then I, I'm just, when we say new wage scale, is that, did you forego a percentage and just, is that what it was? So they get a percentage in a whole new adjustment, like a wage adjustment?
Yes. So FY22 was a holdover one-year agreement on the one and a half percent. FY23 was that new wage scale. The new wage scale is included in that packet, so you can see. But it is a 0% col with, we went through and made adjustments to each individual wage on that. That's part of a three-year deal.
Okay. And then, then the one and a half, one?
Correct.
Okay. I was, and I apologize, I was just thrown off with the one and a half new wage scale. Okay. So it's, it's the salary adjustments, no increase there. And then I guess the actual two, second year would be one and a half and then the one?
Correct.
Okay. That I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other questions?
No.
No? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Item number four is the mayor's communication and the city assessors' communication as well regarding the establishment of the FY23 tax factor and tax levy.
Motion to be adopted, 1.75.
Second.
Second.
Motion to adopt 1.5's tax factor has been made by Counselor C three, Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counselor C six, Counsel Pereira. Do we need a roll call, Madam Clerk? Or just?
No, but I do have the two orders I could read if you'd like.
Does that have a CIP? Because I think it's the CIP that you actually vote on, right?
Yes, I have two, I have two separate orders. One is the residential factor and the other is, are the.
Yeah, can you read them, please?
Yep. The first is, excuse me, ordered that in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the City Council of the City of Flora River does hereby adopt a residential factor of 83.3477, which shall be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for FY23.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second order would be the, the various classes of property, which would be Class 1, which is residential, the amount being 68.2043. Open space, Class 2 is 0. Commercial, Class 3 is 15.7862. Industrial, Class 4 is 9.0349. And personal property, Class 5, is 6.9746. Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt made by Counselor C.
Second.
Counsel Washington, seconded by Counselor C six, Counsel Pereira. Council Washington, seconded by Council C6, Council Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or on the motion to hand up?
No, I was just gonna wait until after the motion.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Just, I guess, through you, Mr. President, can we just ask the administration to just double-check with the Board of Assessors on the small business exemption? Usually it's $10,000 on that for personal property. So I, I think we usually include the vote, so if we need to include the vote, can we just make sure it's at the next meeting?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Item number five are the requests from the Traffic Commission to amend the traffic ordinances.
Refer to ordinances?
Second.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinances has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council C7, Council Reposo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on November 1st, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Councilors La Libbidi and Dion absent and not voting.
Motion so made.
Motion for emergency preamble?
Motion for emergency preamble has been made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Pereira. Roll call.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes. Motion.
Passed through all readings?
Passed through all readings, has been made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council C8, Council Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on November 1st, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counselor La Libbidi absent and not voting. This is the salary schedule for the Director of Fall River Emergency Management Agency.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended?
Motion to pass through first reading as amended, made by Council C1, Council Kadeem, seconded by Council C6, Council Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on November 1st, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended with Counselors La Libbidi and Dion absent and not voting. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through first reading?
Second.
Second.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended, Councilor?
Yes.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended, made by Council C6, Council Pereira, seconded by Council C8, Council Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on November 1st, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be approved with Counselor La Libbidi absent and not voting. This was a graffiti ordinance. If I might suggest, as this is an ordinance, the proper motion should be to pass the ordinance through first reading.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Dion. On the motion, Council C6, Council Pereira.
I just have a question on this. If someone puts graffiti on a house, on someone's house, it's vandalism. That owner has to get rid of the graffiti within 48 hours, or now you did it to two weeks. But if it's vandalism and they have to contact insurance companies, depending on what insurance they have, it may take longer than that. And if we're gonna charge, you know, or have an ordinance that is gonna punish a homeowner or a business owner for being tagged with graffiti, then the city needs to step up and get rid of all the graffiti on city property. I have an issue with that. Because sometimes it's just, obviously, an owner or a business person isn't gonna tag their own business. And if they have insurance that covers something like that, then it's gonna be more than two weeks. Sometimes I just think we put in ordinances that are not realistic enough, or we don't have the manpower, you know, to take care of them. So I'm, I'm gonna object on this because I think it needs more work.
You yield, Councilor?
I am.
Thank you. But you yield?
I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council C7, Council Reposo?
Yeah, just, this is my, my colleague in seat six. This ordinance already existed as it was written. We just made some modifications to it to back up the order of the two graffiti machines through the Bristol County ARPA money. So essentially, in, in summarization of this, 48 hours we felt was too short of a time, so we extended it to two weeks. Council Washington asked in the subcommittee about residential versus commercial property. I think we all identified that the commercial properties are the, are the issue. We don't really see a lot of residential properties that are getting tagged with graffiti. And also, the deputy chief was here. Part of the subcommittee talked about if it's a situation where somebody vandalized a property, and it's a crime, obviously, then, long story short, that if somebody was caught doing it, has to pay to get it removed, it would be the cost of the person who did it versus the property owner. Because Council Washington asked about someone who, you know, house gets tagged by graffiti and then they're unable to pay the, the fine to get it taken care of. There's a little more of that. But just to be clear, the ordinance already exists in the books. We're just kinda enhancing it because it really came down to the lack of, when there's graffiti, who's responsible to, to log it? Who's responsible to notify the property owner, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So that's what we essentially tried to do through that. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council C1, did you have your hand up?
I did, I, I was just gonna kind of echo what my colleague had just mentioned. You know, Council Reposo did put the, the resolution together, did work with the administration closely to make these adjustments. And I just did wanna clarify that this currently is on the books. So we were extending, you know, obviously, the deadlines that were associated with it. And part of the conversations that we had was, obviously, anybody who, at least from a residential standpoint, is gonna be quick to try to get the graffiti off their property because they live there, right? And so if there's any conversation with the administration, and as long as there's an open dialogue, I think there's gonna be, obviously, some room to be able to work with the residents. Again, as, as Council Reposo mentioned, it's, it's, you know, the vacant landlords that are just not monitoring their property, either residential or commercial. A lot of the main commercial properties that are, you know, we, we've seen them, the, you know, graffiti is out there. So I think there's, there's a lot of work that was, that's been done. And I think this is a happy medium in terms of trying to figure out how we can make sure that there's consistency. Because there, there are property owners who really don't care what their property looks like regardless. And then so they're gonna leave graffiti up. So we, we just can't, you know, think about our neighbor who is taking care of the property. We gotta think about the worst-case scenario and how it impacts the quality of life and property value for other residents. So I, I think the, you know, the two weeks was a compromise. So, you know, hopefully, my colleague doesn't object to this and, and supports this, I'll be supporting it. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Council C6, Council Pereira?
I just think if you're gonna do an ordinance, we have to do an ordinance that we're gonna be able to enforce. And sometimes ordinances are done and there's no way to enforce them. That's what I have a concern with. And if we're gonna go out and the city, because it says here that the graffiti will be removed at that person's expense, who's gonna be removing that graffiti? Is it gonna be the city that goes and removes graffiti from somebody's house? And what is the, that expense gonna be? I mean, my colleagues, you know, talked about this at the meeting. This is what they brought before the council, I have no problem with it. There was a motion on the, on the floor, I believe there was a second. I'd ask for a roll call, that's all.
Thank you, Councilor.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Council C7, Council Reposo?
To my colleague in seat six, so two things. It will be charged based on the amendment here. We charge according to the current collective bargaining agreement. And the department responsible is the Department of Community Maintenance. They'll be responsible to remedy the graffiti.
What's the charge?
Based on the current collective bargaining agreement. Hourly rate. Correct.
Council C7 has the floor, Councilor.
I mean, we can, I can ask the administration to come down and clarify, but I'm not sure if they can do that.
That's right, other councils have their hands up. Are you, you, Councilor?
I will at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council C1, Council Kadeem?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing. Again, I think due diligence was done on this ordinance, right? So we have these conversations in ordinance committee. You know, if we're gonna object, we're just gonna push it off for another two weeks, doesn't refer it back to committee. And if it gets referred back to committee, quite frankly, it's getting referred back out because we've had these conversations. So it's like anything else, that the work that's done by the city is gonna be leaned onto that property. So when it's sold, we're gonna collect money, right? It's a taxing, we're in the first position. Those are the conversations that were had right from the get-go. How are we gonna recoup if we're sending DPW out to work on graffiti? We need to make sure that we're capturing the man hours associated with it, the equipment. And we're placing, we're either sending an invoice to the property owner, and if that doesn't get paid, similar to any, any other invoice, they're not gonna be able to pull permits. And we get it leaned. I mean, this is, this, this is two weeks, right? So I, I think it's pretty straightforward. So, I mean, to suggest that, you know, it doesn't have teeth, I don't know how much more teeth we can have, to suggest that, you know, folks haven't done their due diligence to make sure that they've worked on this. Listen, it's there. You know, Council Reposo took the initiative to say, this doesn't make sense, let's make the tweaks. And he worked with the, the administration. I, I don't, I don't see any flaws with it.
You yield, Councilor?
I yield.
Thank you, Council C2, Council Dion.
Yeah, I just have one comment to make. I believe that when we voted for the ARPA funding to purchase these graffiti machines, the subject of manpower and being able to utilize the machines came up then. So if we don't have the manpower, why do we buy the machines? So I don't think that is an issue at this point. That was discussed, everybody voted to get the machines, now we need to utilize them. With that, I yield.
Thank you. I have one more question. So it's two weeks to get it done, because this has been going on for a long, long time. I think when, who reports when the graffiti was actually on there? And who has a timer? And to the Council C6's point is like, who's gonna monitor that? It's been two weeks since that graffiti has been on your house. Is it a complaint from a neighbor or complaint? City's gonna monitor it? And on top of that, the thing that I agree with, and I'm not saying the community didn't do its job, I think it's a very difficult situation that we have here. But if the city's gonna find someone after two weeks of not getting it done, and yet there's graffiti that's been on city property, state property, and sometimes we don't know who the property belongs to because it's on that long 79, and we don't know who owns part of that property down there, where who's gonna clean that up? And then if they're gonna be billing people because they don't clean up in time, what about, we better make sure we clean up all of the graffiti that happens on state and city property in, in two weeks' time, or else it's gonna be pretty tough to say, hey, look, we're not gonna take care of our property, but we're gonna make sure, and we're gonna find if you don't take care of yours. It's a difficult situation. I think that's more what her point is than anything else. Council C7, Council Reposo?
Yeah, and, and I understand my colleague's in-seat six's point. But at the end of the day, we can keep spinning our wheels and we're just gonna stare at it more and more every day. I drive up and down Pleasant Street every day, 365 days a year. And I see that graffiti that's been there four years ago, still there. So we can continue to spin our wheels and just if fans and whats, or we can actually be proactive and get it done. And that's what we're trying to propose through this. Again, and thank you to Council Kadeem, but it is pretty straightforward as far as how it's gonna be enforced, where it's gonna go, and what's gonna be happening if it does not get taken care of. Are there the ifs and the buts with state property and what have you? Yes. But the general consensus here, like, and again, I use Pleasant Street as my influence to go toward this, that graffiti has been sitting there for years. Nothing's been done about it. A lot of those properties, God only knows who owns them, and they haven't been around for a long time. And it doesn't change. The mill on Alden Street, for example, that I drive through every day next door to the school that I work at, has had graffiti on that building. I've been there nine years. It's had graffiti for nine years. And nothing's been done about it. And that's why we went back to the ordinance to say, well, there's really no meat to it, to go after it. So again, I, I would ask my colleagues to support this so we can get things cleaned up. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Council C8, Council Washington?
So I initially had brought up a concern at that meeting. So I understand what my Council on Seat Six is saying. But I'm gonna support this, Andrew. But I do, I do, there are, there will be outliers that their residential properties are tagged and you don't want them to be fined. But I do recall, and maybe someone else can remember, that the administration said that, you know, they would take that into consideration.
It's gonna work with the people.
They, they would work with people if that happened, I do. But it is a concern, it, it's gonna happen, you know, some elderly person owns a property, they don't get outside. Buildings are tagged, you can see them in some residential areas. So it, it's a concern. But I do remember the administration say that they would take that into consideration. I yield, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council C1, did you have something to add to that? Are you okay?
No, just, just one other thing. I mean, this, this is no different than vacant properties, right? So we try to address vacant properties, we wanna move forward on vacant properties. It's the exact same process. There's a notification that's made into the mayor's office, gets referred to minimum housing, the inspectors go out. That's when everything starts. That's, that starts the process of the two-week notice. Listen, at the end of the day, if it gets objected, that's fine. The administration can go out right now and, and enforce the ordinance that's on the books and the, and the property owners have 48, two days, 48 hours. But that's, I'm, I'm okay with it. So if we don't, the ordinance is, is currently in place. So regardless, we can move forward with it, and it's whether it's two weeks or 40, 48 hours. So, you know, at, at the end of the day, again, we can't, when we're, when we're putting together ordinances, we can't think about, okay, how does this impact our neighbor? The ordinances are meant to impact those people who are not taking care of their property, who are, you know, obviously not following or creating quality of life issues. That's what we need to address. This is not really gonna impact the average person because I think the average person will, once notified by the, the city, will have a conversation with either minimum housing, the inspection, you know, the inspectors or the mayor's office to ask for some leeway if, if, you know, two weeks isn't enough time. You know, we had the deputy police chief down, who also mentioned that in terms of cost, if we're worried about the cost associated with it, if they've got a person who is responsible for it and it goes through the court system, there is monetary value that is assigned to the repair of it. So even if the city goes out, at least there's gonna be some money coming back if it goes through the court system. And hopefully, you know, we're able to catch more and more of these individuals that are, you know, tagging houses or commercial property. So I think at the end of the day, again, it's, it's about trying to clean up the city. And then that's what we're trying to, trying to do. And I think the ordinance committee did a good job of it, so I'll, I'll support that with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt, roll call.
Roll call. Speed to pass the ordinance through first reading, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
Reposo?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And President Kamara?
Yes.
The motion carries. The Committee on Real Estate, at a meeting held on October 25th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying communication be granted leave-to-withdraw. This was the resident's request for no parking on Bigelow Street.
To adopt, committee's report?
Second.
Motion to adopt, committee's report has been made by Council C3, Council Kilby, seconded by Council C6, Council Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on November 1st, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted. This is a curb request, curb removal request for Mayara de Silva Pena at 102 Laurel Street for the removal of 30 feet. Motion to adopt?
Excuse me. Motion to adopt has been made by Council C2, Council Dion, seconded by Council C7, Council Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on November first, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave-to-withdraw. This is a resolution to discuss ways to keep residents informed of daily street closures.
No doubt?
Second.
No doubt, made by Counselor in seat three, Counsel Kilby, second by Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas there has been an increase of driver speeding within the area of Northeastern Avenue and Bedford Street, and whereas if left unaddressed can lead to injury, death, property damage, and other life-changing circumstances, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with city administrator, chief of police, and director of traffic to discuss ways to improve resident safety on this important issue.
Motion to refer the Committee on Public Safety?
Second.
Motion to refer the Committee on Public Safety has been made by Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Reposo, second by Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas the Department of Emergency Medical Services is working on changing the location of many of their rescues and other emergency vehicles, and whereas residents have expressed concern regarding having fewer or different rescues and emergency vehicles in fire stations closest to their homes, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the chief of emergency medical services to discuss the planned adjustments and reassure residents that EMS will continue to provide equal access to health care for all neighborhoods.
Motion to refer to Committee on Public Safety?
Second.
Motion for Committee on Public Safety has been made by Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Reposo, second by Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas city parks provide an increased quality of life and enjoyment of the city for residents and visitors, and whereas many city parks are currently in disrepair or being underutilized by local sports teams and residents, and whereas new additions to city parks, such as skate parks and renovations of existing playgrounds and baseball fields, will improve the city overall, now therefore be it resolved that the city administrator convene with the city council committee on finance to discuss the planned budgetary recommendations to improve the parks and recreation division.
Motion to refer to Committee on Finance?
Second.
Motion for Committee on Finance has been made by Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Washington, second by Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira. On the motion, Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Reposo?
Yeah, the only thing, the only comment I have is that I know we're going to be, we're going to be looking at that parks plan in the other subcommittee as well. So I'm, I would hope that we're going to have that information before we start discussing budgetary needs for said plan. With that, I yield.
Should we refer this to the same committee? And have a joint meeting of the, put it all tied all together?
It may not be a bad idea. Counsel Washington, I'll yield to you.
I put in the resolution because of the last meeting, so I, I, you know, wanted an update for the council on everything that they're doing. I think that, um, that's important, so we want to refer to that, that committee.
I, I think it would be more effective if you refer it to the committee, they can give you a broad range of updates.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
Before we put in the finance and make a financial obligation to something that they're working on all together, because it's, it's kind of similar and close to the other ones, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Do you withdraw your motion then?
I withdraw my motion.
Counsel, do you yield, Counselor?
I yield, sorry.
Counselor in seat six, Counsel what?
I think the sooner this meeting happens between these two committees, the better, because we have vacant fields. Yet the Titans, a semi-football pro team from Far River, they have to play outside of the city because they can't rent space here. You could have a soccer and a football field combination. There are places for that. There are places for a good softball field, so you can get traveling teams to come, and they pay, and that makes money for the park department. People want to play volleyball. The park department has taken volleyball nets down from places. If people want to play volleyball, get a park where they can go and play volleyball there. So I think, you know, finding out what activities that the residents could have in our parks is, is something we should be working on. The parks should really be looking at creating outdoor activities.
I agree, Counselor.
For the citizens, so I don't know when they'd have this meeting, but I kind of thought finance was good because we'd all be there, but if it's only, if it's going to be six members or maybe five members, I don't know what committees are going to be hearing this, what two committees this is going to.
Well, we want to put it in one committee, the Counsel Reposo's committee.
So what committee, what committee would that be?
It'd be Human Services, Youth, Elder Affairs. That's because the last meeting we had, we motioned to refer that conversation to the committee that I chair, so.
So I entertain a motion to refer to the?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion's omitted.
Motion to refer?
Second.
To refer to the Committee on?
Health and Human Services.
Human Services Housing Youth and Elder Affairs.
Motion has been made by Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Reposo, second by Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira.
Yep.
Any discussion on that motion?
I, I do.
Counselor seat eight, Counsel Washington?
Just want to make sure that that, that was, we want to get that update in a few weeks. I know people have been talking about the parks, and there was a lot of conversation back and forth in the last meeting, so I just want to make sure that that's like on the agenda, like soon to have that happen.
I'll, I'll work on it next day or two.
All right, thank you. I yield, Council President. Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mayor Clark?
Whereas the winter months are approaching, and whereas the city council should be concerned about homelessness in the city, now therefore be resolved that the administration provide an update on the estimated number of homeless individuals in the city, and be it further resolved that the administration provide the amount of funding received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to address this matter, and what steps are being taken to address this issue.
The motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
I'm asking if there was a motion.
Oh, motion.
Second.
Counselor in seat one?
I thought Brad made a motion.
He probably, we didn't have to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he made a motion.
That's okay. Counselor in seat, second by Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira. On the motion, Counselor in seat three, sponsor resolution, Counsel Kilby?
Yeah, just real quickly, of course, what triggered this is the, the recent news, and I had some conversations with Mr. Dion from Community Development, and not to be an alchemist, but he did say, you know, obviously, the mayor's on top of it, it looks like, according to the articles that I read, but homelessness has increased, and it might, I don't know, due to COVID or whatever, but I thought it was an important thing to put in so we could get a presentation here. I neglected to have a committee, what committee they should go to, and the reason, it maybe should go to Health and Human Services, but there is a financial element to this in terms of the HUD money, and, and I, so maybe I'm thinking about finance, Mr. President, to get some type of presentation from the administration in terms of what, and I, I know it's like a dropout rate, right? Unemployment rate, it's probably fluctuates. It's a tough number to get a hold of, but I was told by Mr. Dion that it, it has increased. So I think it's something important that we sit down and we vent and, you know, at least get, you know, update in terms of what resources are being utilized to, to deal with this issue, so. I yield. If someone wants to amend it or I can't refer it to go to finance, I'll, I'll make that motion. Or, or whatever committee we, we think is appropriate, so. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Any opinion on what committee you'd like to put this into, Counselors?
Make a motion to refer to finance, to amend the, the resolution.
You can do it to?
Oh.
You want to do finance, that's fine, but you can do it to Human Service Housing?
Either, either one.
Youth, and if it comes out to money, then it could go to finance.
Maybe that sounds more, more specific.
I agree.
Motion to refer to Human Services Housing Youth and Elder Affairs?
Motion to refer to Human Services Housing Elder Affairs has been made by Counsel Reposo, is it?
Second.
Second by Counsel Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Could we take items seventeen to twenty-three? Oh, no, wait. Which one did you want?
Motion to separate twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Separate from what?
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-three together?
Second.
Motion to take item seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-three has been made, is it, and second?
Second.
Made by Counsel Pereira, second by Counsel Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, any opposed? Okay, so be it. Now is there a motion to adopt?
Twenty-one wasn't included in that.
No, twenty-one.
Correct. We took them, we made a motion to take them separate?
Yeah, yeah.
Voted on it, now I need a motion to adopt items seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pelletier in seat five, second by Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to?
Motion to refer twenty-one to, uh, Public?
Regulations.
Public transportation.
Second.
Do we need, may I continue to read these curb removals?
Public works. Yours and regulations.
Item twenty-one is, um, Michael Ozog. Michael Ozog, thirty-four Manton Street.
If I may?
Excuse me?
Do you need to read the ones that we just voted on? Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three?
I can read them if you'd like.
Excuse me?
I can read them if you'd like.
I think you can just be safer if we did.
Sure. Uh, the, the curb removals that you have just voted on, James Curran, six fifty-six Harvard Street for the removal of fourteen feet on Eldridge, Mohammed Yudin, six nine three New Boston Road, for the removal of sixteen feet of curbing on Acacia Street, Brenda De Silva, forty-one Hayfield Street, the removal of eight feet of curbing on Hayfield Street, Tiberio Jacinto, two forty-five Fieldstone Lane, removal of eight feet on Fieldstone Lane, David Pike, ninety-one Globe Street, the removal of sixteen feet on Globe Street, and Catahoula Development LLC for the removal of seventy-four feet, and addition of sixteen feet on Danforth Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now before you, we have David Ozog at thirty-four Manton Street.
Michael Ozog.
Excuse me, yes, Michael Ozog, thirty-four Manton Street.
Removal five feet.
Was for public works and transportation?
Second.[1488.51]